Alright, we're gonna get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. Alright. We have ordinances on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-20. Handicap partners, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons at three parking spaces. Forty-four B Chester Circle, Ten Lower Place, Sixty-eight Remsen Avenue. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-12, Traffic Control Regulations, Schedule 22, Traffic Control Signals, George Street and Hamilton Street, George Johnson Drive. Two, George Street and Albany Street. And we have nothing on first reading. Then we have resolutions. One, approve a agenda amendment. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for D tax sales certificates. Four, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by the Salvation Army for help for the needy, dated November 24th to December 23rd. Specific location, Monument Tree Land, December 3rd to December 1st, 2017, from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. High Acre Gency. To Albany Street, Carriage Ride Pickup, December 15th through 17th, 2017, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Corner of Route 27, George Street, November 24th, 2017. December 23rd, 2017, Fridays from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., corner of Commercial Avenue and George Street, November 24th, 2017, to December 23rd, 2017, Fridays from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Five, approve charter, 159, budget insertion. Internet archive for community webs empowering public librarians to create community history web archives. Amount $6,500. Six, approve renewal of liquor license with special rule before... Rock... okay. Rocker... yes. TK seven. Liquor license. I know, fam, I'm just... I don't wanna be culturally insensitive. But liquor license, number 1214, 33-033-004, 2017 to 2018. Seven, approve awarded contract with Cabot Nerd Americas Incorporated for portable activated carbon system for the water utility. Specification number 61517WWRR. Not to exceed $93,750. Eight, held at the request of the Director of Rogers Village Main Replacement Project, Phase Two specification number. Nine, approve off-premise scrabble 50/50 for the Hildrecks Hotel and Conference Center. Ten, Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey for State Theater Regional Arts Center in New Brunswick, February 10th, March 24th, April 7th, May 5th, and May 12th, all 2018. Ten, approve amendment and resolution, reason to pay additional legal fees in amount of Orlando and Downing with representation of Mayor Jim Carley with the man Steve Middleton versus the City of New Brunswick at all in Arthur Anderson, City of New Brunswick and punitive damage claim from $241,125 to $242,350. Eleven, approve amendment and resolution, R-051736, a change order with Allied Construction Group Incorporated for Southern American Down Westernville Pump Stations Upgrade. Specification number 24512WR. Amount of $42,342. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twelve, approve resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the City of New Brunswick Police Department and Middlesex County where prosecutors office for specialized investigative law enforcement equipment. Thirteen, approve amendment and resolution, an additional $30,000 for ongoing tax appeals for 2017 for Division of Assessments with Oakland, Longwood, Moran, Dunn, Duquesne, LLP. For 2017, Special Counsel for Tax Appeals Division of Assessment from $70,000 to $100,000. Four, uh, four, fourteen. Approved relaxation of noise order requested by Landscape Maintenance Services Incorporated. Reason to obstruct a 20-by-20 portion of the sidewalk from front of 317 George Street to remove a tree that abus the city right away. Saturday, November 18th, 2017, alternate date, November 25th, 2017, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., four-hour period during that time. Approved 15, approve amendment and resolution, extend the hours for Saturday, November 18th, 2017, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in order to perform a 3,000 cubic yard concrete pour. Relaxation of the City Noise Orders by New Brunswick Development Corporation on behalf of AJD Construction Company Incorporated. Reason to keep New Brunswick Performing Arts Center project on schedule. Date Saturday, November 18th, 2017, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sixteen, approve amendment and resolution, R-111729, change order number three, with Garden State Highway Products for 2017 Furnish and Deliver Regulatory Signs. Specification number 912-17, amount of $152.10. Approval of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Seventeen, approve relaxation of the City Noise Order requested by Amquipped Crane. Reason to place a crane on French Street to lift and to place all mechanical equipment for the Rockwood Johnson Vertigo Expansion Project. Saturday, November 4th, 2017, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., non-pro-tongue. Eighteen, approve relaxation of the City Noise Orders requested by Virgonia Crane Company Incorporated. Reason to place a crane on Somerset Street between Eastern Avenue and Little Albany Street to remove existing roof top H-back equipment at the Cancer Institute of New Jersey. Date Saturday, November 18th, 2017, times 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Nineteen, approve amendment and resolution, R-041469, change order credit with Orchard Holdings LLC, George Street Commercial Avenue Traffic Signal Relocation. Specification number 847-14, credit amount $10,807.75. Approval of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty, approve person-to-person place transfer liquor license. Liquor license, the Famous Days Bridge Incorporated to Saul Investments at New Brunswick LLC. Twenty-one, approve awarded contract, excuse me, with Lex Nexus Risk Solutions. Online access to accident reports for the police department. Twelve-month period commencing, November 19th, 2017, ending November 18th, 2018. Specification number 62617RFP, fair and open. Twenty-two, approve awarded contract at JP Contractors for New Brunswick Water Department Plant Neutralizing Tank Coating, specification number 611-17W. Not to exceed $242,100. Twenty-three, resolution authorizing budget transfers municipal budget. Twenty-four, approve amendment and resolution, reason additional amount of $2,000 for the New Brunswick Public Library of Sal, Electrical Company Incorporated for electrical maintenance repair services. Specification number 494-15P. Not to exceed $2,000. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase in 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-five, approve amendment and resolution, an additional amount of $10,000 for the water utility. Shannon Chemical Corporation to furnish and deliver chemicals for bulk feed facilities. Specification number 10620217W. Not to exceed $10,000. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-six, approved purchase by the police department under state contracts. A-877, M-7,000 Data Communication with She International Corporation for subscription license for the police department, not to exceed $1,566. Twenty-seven, approval awarded contract with Maximum Quality Foods Incorporated for furnish and deliver products for the Senior Citizen Resource Center. Twelve-month commencing, November 19th, 2017, and ending November 18th, 2018. Specification number 62317P, not to exceed $21,982. Twenty-eight, approve amendment of resolution, R-111725, change order number twelve, with Joe Meg Contract Corporation for 2015 Senator Sewer Improvement with Phase Two A, specification number 895158, not to... oh, the amount of $13,000. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Twenty-nine, approve appointment of counsel for Harry Hossletter Esquire for Special Counsel for Conflict Attorney for Tax Appeals Division of Assessments, not to exceed $3,000. Then thirty, approve amendment and resolution with change order number one with Jack Construction Corporation Diamond Construction for Crossmark Safety Improvement in roadway, warning light assistance, Lee Avenue and Comstock Street, Lee Avenue and Delapene Street, Lee Avenue and Handy Street, Remsen Avenue and Ward Street. Specification number 881-15, credit amount $54,780. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirty-one, how much requested the city clerk? Thirty-two, authorized tax collector to transfer credits on several tax accounts. We have items for discussion by council, so on and so forth.
Mr. Council President, Councilwoman, Councilman, the proposed city council's meeting schedule of 2018. There's a draft in your packet. I believe it's consistent with what we have discussed about the conflict days, July 4th being one of your meeting days normally, and we moved to July 5th. And there's one other on there, July 15th, Thanksgiving holiday. So that's in order, it will be agendaized through the next meeting in December.
Thank you. Meeting without coming over, clerk, please do as the honor of calling the road.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar here. Councilmember Socorro Ludwig here. Council President Fleming.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice would give sufficient notice in the time and place of all conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, has been transmitted to the official paper of the home news, uh, paper of the City of New Brunswick named the home news. The police strive to plead allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's hands, one mission, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
If we just please stand for a moment of silence for all those that died senselessly in violence around the world, especially in this country, and especially for those that have given their lives in the sense of freedom around the world. Thank you. Entertaining motion on the minutes.
Your motion rejected minutes?
Standing. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. We have ordinances on... we have no public hearings, and we have an ordinance on second reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-20, Handicap Partners, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for the Handicapped Persons at three parking spaces at forty-four Chester Circle, Ten Lower Place, and Sixty-eight Remsen Avenue. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this, and this alone? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, we have two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-12, Traffic Control Regulations, Schedule 22, Traffic Control Signals, George Street and Hamilton Street, Johnson Drive, George Street and Albany Street. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, now we move on to resolutions. We have Resolution 1 through 32. Would anybody from the public like to speak on the resolutions, and the resolutions alone?
We are holding forty-four and sixty-seven.
Seeing none?
Move the resolutions.
Standing. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes, we're standing on ten now.
So noted.
Alright. Now we have items for discussion by council, because we already... We're entertaining for the 2018 schedule. I believe we have a few since last week.
Yes, normally the council meeting would call on that particular first Wednesday in July, which would be July 4th. So we have proposed to move the meeting to July 5th, which is a Thursday, at 5:30, same time as it would be normally, but the fourth.
And then the other day?
And then the other day is, uh, the year... The November 21st meeting, which is the second meeting in November, is actually the day before Thanksgiving. In light of the fact that many people travel the day before Thanksgiving, we have proposed to move that to the meeting Tuesday, the 20th of November, same time before 6:30. Those would be the only two scheduled changes if you know that are out of the ordinary. And if the council's fine with that, as I indicated earlier, we could have that reservation later for adoption at the meeting. And that will be on your agenda for your first meeting in December.
So noted. Alright. And I apologize that, uh... Did the turkey give a... I left a paper in the other room. Oh, you took it. Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing it out for me. I appreciate that. Uh, there's a free turkey distribution for residents of the City of New Brunswick on Monday, November 20th, that's this coming Monday. In front of City Hall on Fire Street, turkeys will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis with proof of ID and New Brunswick residency. Uh, so that's a good thing. Uh, in conjunction with Community Food Bank, Manuel Lutheran Church, and Christ Church. So if you know a family, not just a family in need, and somebody that needs turkeys, please distribute the information, and we'll try to get it out on the... Is it already on the city website? Okay, it's already on the city website. Alright. So noted, anybody?
Saturday, Veterans Day parade. It's a little cool, but it was very nice, well done. Congratulations to all the veterans who showed up. The grand marshal, Mickey Stilbo.
Yes. Here, it's called.
You were the grand marshal?
Yes. Alright, anybody else? Alright, so now we're gonna move to public discussion. Anybody from the public, please step towards the microphone. A reminder, in five minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, Daniel Moore, for Tom's House Street. Okay, catch my breath, moment. Come here, come here, upstairs there. Uh, I want to mention about getting back to Livingston Avenue, due to where, I know as we spoke about it maybe about five months ago, about how dull Livingston Avenue is. I said, give me a moment, please. Come here, up them stairs, not there, yeah, no. Uh, due to where how dull it is. I know they're supposed to repair Livingston Avenue, but they never gave a date, but I'd like to say, wow, I didn't see so many close calls on the corner of Livingston and Elizabeth, that's right by Futon again, with the dull, dull white lights. I'm asking the city, please, once again, not to wait until the construction goes through just to change the bulbs. You have over five bulbs that's out on Livingston Avenue. And I meant, wow, close calls of somebody really getting hit again. And you know, due to where it's getting, time went back. It's getting dark around 5:00 o'clock, and you still have the kids coming home from school, after-school programs. So I hope that is something that you can do immediately. Call into PSENG to have them to replace those bulbs, the ones that are out. You have, like I said, at least four that are out.
Well, yes. You referring to streetlights over there?
Streetlights, yes, where the, uh... It's better with the orange lights, those lights are very dull. And then, like I said, being dull with the light over there, you have so many streetlights that are out over there, like I said. Please, I, I hope you can, that doesn't, like, what takes so long to do that?
Well, what we can do is on the way, Mr. ... I will stop and get the poll numbers through the mayor's office. We have a contact with public service to repolt, to report, you know, out fixtures. Now, changing the type of bulb, that's a whole separate scenario that I don't know that we can address at the moment, but certainly the missing bulbs we can. Uh, but it's all new street lighting and the conflict design, and this mortgage right is probably about a year away since we will see that. But, uh, but certainly as it relates to the bulbs that are out, we can address those immediately.
Okay, thank you. And then also, due to where, I know, uh, when I mentioned to you about putting the flashes of 15 miles per hour for middle school on Livingston Avenue, that was where you said it was put in, that's where you had to speak to the county about that. Where, uh, to give to the county, there's over 100 pictures to show why this is needed soon as possible to slow, slow down, slow down. 35 miles per hour to 15 miles per hour, school zone. Every other school has it. If the county needs, needs the pictures, there you go. And then that's where I will give for the Board of Education. Over 100 pictures to show, it may not be drivers at fault, but the kids running across. But like I said, another thing with close calls. So, so, uh, have the Board of Education written a letter yet?
Actually, the letter came from the City Department of Engineering, as well as North Brunswick, it's a state, right, we're not county, just wanted to clarify that. The state required that both New Brunswick and North Brunswick make a request. In addition to that, there was a form that the Board of Education had to fill out. That's all been done and submitted to the state, I'm gonna say, at least four weeks ago. So they, the last time we did a request, it took them about two and a half months to respond to us. So we have to wait for the response. But the letter's been out to them over four weeks.
So then there's, there's no way where you can, like, put in an emergency request, like I said, how, how many close, close calls, like I said, with these kids there?
I'm not aware of the emergency request procedure, but I will inquire.
Well, okay, thank you, because like I said, this, put them on CDs, like I said, over 100 pictures to show how many close calls are there. And then another request, that, that was where for Livingston Avenue, right there, that was the situation where the crossing guards said they're having a problem with parking, where parking on the corner, that was where I had mentioned possible for orange sticks to go there on the, on the corner.
I'm sorry, the orange sticks. Can I...
That's right, uh, right in the corner, corner there. Actually, the pictures are there to show.
This is at Livingston and...
Livingston and...
Eighth, I mean, Ninth and or Club, it's Ninth and Club.
Not, that's Ninth, or where the crossing guards are. What they're saying, like I said, the pictures are there where it's hard to see, making a blind zone, just to where the cars are parking there. So, oh, okay, and I believe that's all. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Please look into that soon as possible, thank you.
Hi, Carl Ramirez, New Brunswick today. Uh, my first question to the council is, does the council have any comments on the New Brunswick Police Department investigation into the housing authority?
No.
No, okay. Does Captain Miller have any comments on the investigation?
Can you address it here, and then Captain Miller?
Can you ask Captain Miller, do you have any comments on the investigation?
Captain Miller, do you have any comments on the investigation?
It's ongoing. It's ongoing.
It's ongoing.
Sorry. Are there any witnesses entitled to have an attorney present then giving a formal take statement to the New Brunswick Police Department? Is there any policy that states otherwise?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Alright. Are witnesses entitled to have an attorney present when giving a formal take statement to the New Brunswick Police Department? Or is there any policies that state otherwise?
Are you entitled to have a witness when giving a statement to the police?
No, a lawyer.
Oh, a lawyer, I'm sorry.
It would depend on the circumstance, that question's too general to answer this way.
Alright, thank you. Um, what are the council's biggest accomplishments of 2017?
Because you're reading right now, I can't, I'm not getting it.
What are the council's 2017 best accomplishments?
Oh, that was one of Chuck and Craig's questions, and I told him before we weren't answering that.
Alright, so you're not answering this time either?
Um, no.
Alright.
You can tell him that, too.
Alright, is it illegal to park on the New B Amtrak bridges?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Um, I've seen the New Brunswick Parking Authority is enforcing that as well. Can you confirm whether or not, since cones are illegally put into the street to reserve parking lots, is it allowed for any stranger to come and take the cones?
Is it, is it, uh... Is it illegal for any stranger?
My question is, is it, since there are cones that are illegally put on streets to reserve parking lots, is it legal for a stranger or pedestrian to come and take that cone?
Oh, did you, alright, so if the cones are illegally put on the streets, is it illegal for somebody to remove the illegal cones?
If they're illegal.
If they're illegal.
If they're illegally put there.
If the cone does not belong to you, then yes, it'd be a theft.
The illegal cones.
You're taking, you're taking something that doesn't belong to you. That's not right.
So it's illegal for...
Can somebody, a resident or a private citizen, put a cone on the street? I think that's what you're trying to...
No, it's connected.
Okay, hey, somebody put it to preserve the space, right? And then somebody else comes by and takes away so they could park there.
Does the cone belong to that person? No, that isn't that. If you're asking me, are you allowed to put a cone to reserve the spot? No, it's a private property. But that's not what he's asking. He's asking if someone takes something that doesn't belong to them, it's a theft.
Okay, then just move it to the side, go up and park it.
It's not, it's not their property. The, uh, the person on the other side could have a complaint just in the other way.
Now, if traffic cones are installed by a private citizen to block vehicles from parking in front of the fire hydrant, would that be illegal?
Yeah, I can't understand, yes, they asked me here. Could you, could you say, ask what he's saying?
Can you, uh, can you?
There's a fire by the house on the Am Street, with little cones in front of it to keep people away from parking.
You cannot do that.
Alright. But, so, as I stated, I had to put cones there, so I'm asking the council because today I had those cones stolen by a FedEx driver. I did a follow-up report, and this is my next question. Um, and officer Tate, um, didn't want to take the report because I, I was a minor, and I had statements taken before from officers with an adult present. Does the, is it illegal for an officer, or is it allowed for an officer to take my statements when I've been accused of a crime or in other situations with, like, an adult present?
No, officers should take your report. If you have their information, I'll forward it to Internal Affairs and Internal Affairs.
Alright, so even if I'm a minor, they're, they're required to take the statement.
Even if you're a minor?
To take a statement or take a report?
Take a report, statement, whatever, like it is.
It's two different things. They can't take a statement from you without your parents present. They can't take a report for me to...
Alright, so if it's in court, they can't take it.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Another question is, um, will the city be, be kind enough to put cones or some type of barrier to put in front of the fire hydrant in front of my home, which is located intersection of railroad and today I'm with a fire hydrant.
Can they, no, I mean, I'm just gonna assume that. Can the city put a cone to prevent people?
The police department's not gonna put a cone in front of the fire hydrant, I don't know. It depends what department it is, the asking engineering, or I don't know what he's asking.
General, I need a professional.
You can't block a car, because then...
I mean, like, it's a cone, it's obviously can be made a way.
But it's already illegal to park there anyway, so anybody who parks, it's...
Yes, but...
Just call the police.
Yes, I called the police, and trust me, they didn't arrive. The officer arrived the next day. And vehicles parked there four hours. New Brunswick Parking Authority drives by, they don't take it with vehicles. Police drive by. Last time I even have a video of an officer going by and stopping and rolling down his windows while there was a vehicle there illegally parked. And he drove right off after that.
I'm not sure the New Brunswick Parking Authority, you don't think it's for that, Captain Miller? Parking in front of a fire hydrant?
I believe they do.
Again, okay.
If Mr. Ramirez has a video of the cop doing that, making that comment, please bring it to me, and we'll investigate it.
Yeah, I mean, like, there was no comment, he just realized when they looked at, and maybe while taking the pictures, but the officer just kept on driving and seeing that the car was illegally parked.
I thought you were saying the officer made a comment, but it's alright.
No. Alright. That's all my questions, thank you so much. Also, um, special thanks to the city for donating turkeys to the, to the community. Thank you.
John L. Pefton, New Brunswick, New Jersey. One of my reasons, I didn't, I don't think we spoke since the, um, uh, Texas Houston... I want to at least probably, I didn't come publicly.
Yeah.
To, you know, uh, thank you.
We had, back before, you know, later on.
I want to publicly, you know, thank you, it was a great job, you know, uh, what you did, the participation that was involved with, you know, you being here, and, uh, things that, and I got a lot of the, um, accolades for taking the trip, but, you know, you didn't get as much, but you were, you were a major part of making it happen. And I wanted to, if I knew Bruce would've did that at the NWC Bank with, I would've gave him a heads up, to let him know, you know, you also had a major part of it. But I didn't know he was gonna do that. I also want to, um, mention, I see your statue, I don't know what it's about, because I remember, you know, months prior, you guys said that you were gonna put up, um, maybe months prior, you guys said that you were gonna put up, uh, that very statue in different areas, and I know there's one by the Hildrecks, I think.
Yes.
I'm gonna go out there and look at that, I don't know where, but, but, what's the next plans in the other one that are gonna be set up? I know.[1759.02] I know.
Which um?
They said there were gonna be different historical marks.
Right, right.
Now, assuming that's one of the first ones.
Yes.
I I believe the uh New Brunswick Public Sculpture Group is looking at a statue of Paul Robeson and um Joyce Kilmer as their next um statues that they're looking to fund.
Is anyone like voting on this or are they just taking?
They take input, right?
They take input.
Sure they take input, sure. You want to, I can get you the I can get you the information. If you want to go down, we can go put the input in.
Definitely.
All right.
And um last but not least, you know, for the ratio, I'm trying to get you guys out of here.
All right.
But it doesn't matter how much Captain Miller grows his beard out, he will never be a Tormetta pig.
Hey, hey, hey. On that news, anybody else from the public?
I promise you guys, I won't bother anymore about the cats. Uh just wanted to share with you, my name is Nancy Scalzone, I live in Raraka Gardens, Chester Circle. I just wanted to share with you that we do have a November twenty-seventh ten AM meeting set up with with Russ. At that meeting, we will have Jane Gaye from People for Animals to help formulate this ordinance favorable to the needs of the city. There will be representatives from rescue organizations there. Mr. Brian Hackett from the United from the Humane Society of the United States, New Jersey Division is the director. He's been invited to be there.
Sir, sir. Can you stop walking in here?
All right. Uh Mr. Brian Hackett from the uh H S U S New Jersey Division will be there. Also, Ms. A J Albrecht from uh Best Friends Animals Society, she's a lawyer, advocate, and she will, she's from Best Friends Animals Society, which is a national organization. She has also been invited to to attend. These people have extensive experience in writing uh ordinances in New Jersey and across the country. There was no way I knew we were going to get an ordinance passed here in thirty days. Because of that, we're respectfully asking you to continue with the ban on enforcing the feed, the no feeding ban until we can wrap this up. Uh the caregivers in the city are most grateful for this, especially since we are now approaching the time of the year when the weather is getting colder. Um I've been made aware of a couple of instances where animal control has gone into yards and removed feeding stations, which are no more than rubber-made containers tilted on their sides to keep the food dry. Uh I don't know why they felt the need to, I don't know what the rationale was there, but uh they allowed people to feed the cats, but took the rubber-made containers, so I don't know what that's all about. Also wanted to share with you on Monday, uh probably about twenty representatives from rescue organizations were at the Middlesex County Freeholder Meeting. Mr. Brian Hackett presented the board with a coalition letter signed by twenty-eight rescue organizations and veterinarians in county in, these are veterinarians that participate in the spending meter of federal caps. We are extremely optimistic that the county will pass a resolution favoring T N R as have four or five counties already and the state have. Mr. Tomorrow, a freeholder from Edison, is himself T N R's cap. Edison has a pretty good T N R ordinance. Uh we have also expressed the urgent need for a county regional shelter. Helmeta building sits empty. I urge you to contact your freeholder colleagues and see if uh they could make a push for maybe taking over this building. I was in Helmeta the night of the New Jersey S P C A raid. We need a shelter that is run by competent by competent director. I, the horrors that I saw in that shelter that night, and we were contracted to shelter along with twenty-seven other communities, which were way too many for them to be contracted to. From ten o'clock that night till two-thirty that morning, I was in the cat room cleaning cat cages, feeding animals that hadn't been fed in two to three days by the uh director and her husband of the shelter. So um we have an empty building there. The county takes over this building, finds a great director. There's no way people would not volunteer to help with this shelter. We have a very urgent need, and unless we pass T N R in this town, New Brunswick will never be able to contract with a no-kill shelter. We need to keep these cats out of Bloemix. In two thousand sixteen, she reported three hundred and seventeen cats taken into the state. Well, I know that's impossible because we had three hundred cats from New Brunswick taken there. She put that down for the whole year. However, her kill rate for what, three seventeen, was two hundred and forty-eight cats. She does not advocate for lost animals. There's no way to anybody, anybody that loses their pets there, and I'm not talking about dogs too, they're supposed to call her and find out if she has the animal. There should be a way for the city, if they find pets, dogs that get lost, cats that get lost, people that report them, there should be a way that the city can put this up on their website or Facebook page or something. We found your cat, we found your dog. It might, it's, you know, the problem here is that we have no place to hold, you have no place to hold the animals and you're forced to bring them to uh Bloemix. At the present time, I need to, I think I should mention that uh there is a campaign going on right now run by uh rescue organizations and in the next month or so, we plan to sterilize as many cats as we possibly can in Middlesex County in this area. Um it's imperative that we do this because there are kittens out there still being born and we don't want kittens going to Bloemix. I get a kitten back pre-mated in a box. She throws hers in the garbage. So.
Thank you.
Um we're looking forward to this meeting, and once again, I ask you to please continue[1749.61]